Let's meet us to the flag of the United States of America. To develop appropriate spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
First Councilman Towns needs that indication.
Will you pray with me please? Heavenly Father, we thank you this day and as we repurpose the God here today, Lord, take care of business in our county. We ask you to guide us, protection and blessing on all those present, and Lord, you should do what's best for your kingdom, people here, people in our county, just name your prayer. Amen.
Number four, approval of agenda requires a motion. Got a motion in a second? Motion in a second. All in favor? Any input? Number five, approval of minutes, revised minutes, February 22nd.
Mr. Chair, before we approve the minutes, I want to really discuss something about the airport commission that we brought up last meeting. I want to discuss the airport commission vote last month. I called the chairman after the meeting last month and asked that my vote was strong because I thought I had nominated Tom Refram, that we were voting on adding him to the nominations, and that is not what we were voting on. It was supposed to be noted in the minutes, and it did not. I feel the vote on the airport commission is far behind them. It was not included in our project, as other departments work, and was not necessarily in the agenda to indicate that it would be voted on. These were two votes, and these candidates should have been voted on separately. By lumping them together, I am being defiled of my vote. One candidate is my nephew, so I would need to abstain from that vote. The other candidate, proposed by Councilman Coward, not someone who I would ever vote for and would have voted no. All councilmen did not have the same opportunity to propose candidates because they didn't know he was going to be on the agenda, which is unfair. I feel that the vote should be redone, proposing one candidate at a time and calling for the vote, not on this matter, but all future matters. Additionally, I feel that if someone is replaced on the board, the county should send a letter thanking him for his service and advising them not to have been replaced before the board's next meeting to avoid embarrassment in the airport situation. If the council decides not to redo the vote, I want to withdraw my vote and will have to vote to abstain since they lumped together in one vote, and it would be impossible for me to vote my nephew's appointment. I would like last month's minutes to reflect this, and I would like this statement that I have made today, which I will provide you so that they'll be included in this month's meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Attorney May can make some comments on that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I wasn't here last week, so just reading through the minutes, what appears to be the under the committee appointments is what Mr. Finkley was referring to for the library board and the grievance committee.
Yeah, then the airport was involved in that.
Yeah. And so it appears that all council members voted in favor. I don't, have the council, have these individuals been notified that they have been appointed yet?
Yeah.
So I think the option would be that Mr. Finkley certainly could put in the record his statement, and council could vote to have that included in the minutes and have Mr. Finkley change his vote based on learning that he had a potential conflict of interest in either abstaining or changing his vote to no. You know, I would have to, and I think we would have to look at whether, having voted on the prevailing side, he can move to reconsider these appointments. He did vote on the prevailing side, but I believe that he's indicated that he would have to abstain on at least one vote. So I think the option would be to allow him to include his minutes in, I mean, his...
I think he wants to rescind the other vote.
Right.
We want to rescind the other vote, right? But that's the one to rescind the other.
I think he could, I think the council could include his statement in the minutes and note that he is rescinding his vote based on the conflict of interest. You know, as it relates to the vote that's already taken, I'm not sure that there's any recourse for that, to go back at this point. But we'd be happy to look at that, report back. But I think that presently, if he wants the minute, that his statement to be included in the record in the minutes and note that in the minutes he has rescinded his vote, council can certainly do that tonight.
So approval of minutes revised minutes, February 22nd, 2023, March 23rd, 2023, and Councilman Finkley's statement of rescinding his vote on the airport board committee. Requires a motion.
Need a motion.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any input? Number six, ordinance reading, number 23-03, third reading, Dillon County Dirt Road Acceptance and Maintenance Ordinance Reading. A proposed ordinance that allows for and allows a process for the county to accept dirt roads that meet certain criteria and that meet the criteria of first reading of the ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to request that we lay a vote on this until our next meeting. Mr. Bozzi is back in, the attorney, so we can sit down with him and review it and make the insertions that we need to make for that.
Does it require a motion, table?
Yes.
Requires a motion. Make a motion, table. Motion in a second. Motion in a second, table. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Any input? Fair Housing Resolution.
Mr. Chair, this is a resolution we do with the Cog every year. It makes it available for CDBG grants and different grants, and I'd like to ask council to approve if their housing resolution.
Requires a motion.
Need a motion to approve this for housing resolution.
Got a motion in a second?
I say it.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any input? For your policy resolution, number 23-04, President Dillon County Council determines that it is both necessary and appropriate to set forth guidelines of policy for county officials and employees to use in responding to requests for information under Cycphlon Freedom Information Act, Cycphlon Code 30-4-10.
Mr. Chair, this is a resolution that our attorney has drawn up for us to make us in compliance with FOIA requests that we may receive and that we're having orderly processing and handling those FOIA requests. I'd like to ask council to approve it to do that.
Requires a motion.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I know you haven't asked for a discussion, but I'd like to know exactly what the FOIA request, what your change is.
This is a new policy. We don't have a resolution on FOIA requests. We've just been handling individuals, they come in, and I'll let Mr. Robinson sort of address what this policy how to help us out.
As I understand, and again, Mr. DeBozze prepared this and submitted it prior to leaving town, it's my understanding that Dillon County did not have a policy, a FOIA policy adopted. This is just a formally adopting the FOIA policy as set out by the South Carolina FOIA Act. And so you're, basically, the county is just adopting what the state act provides. It also provides the procedures, so there'll be written, in this policy, there'll be written guidelines, so when people make a FOIA request, they can be provided with a copy of the county policy on how to proceed with FOIA requests. Presently, that we don't, the county doesn't have a policy to provide them, to show them how to request information on the FOIA.
We'll also be compensated for our time.
So the act does allow, we were just talking about, the act does allow the county to charge a reasonable fee that's set by the statute to produce information?
I understand. I know, familiar with the act. I just want to make sure that it included a way for us to be compensated for our time sometime in the, with, because it's very long, and it takes a while to have information again. At least we won't even get the labor that we put into it back. Sometimes 25 cent a copy just ain't enough. Somebody spends hours and hours on that, especially an attorney, we need to be compensated. I just want to make sure we compensate.
Right, and I think to the permit, to the extent permitted by law, then the county can collect those fees.
I understand we're not trying to make money off of it, I just want to make it. Does the policy include that?
It does, because it's in accordance with the state law.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yeah.
I'll say. Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Right here. Counselor question.
The Harmita Scholarship Fund, Harmita Manor Scholarship Fund, Mr. Benny Basics at OPRTM, and they're asking for donation.
Get one.
How do you appeal to Dr.? Next, we have Mayor Sterling Lee in the town of Lakeview, they're having a jazz in the court concert, and they're asking for donation.
The request has donations submitted to someone else, is that accurate?
It could be.
I don't think we can do that, can we?
It'd be entertaining, but, you know. It's for the town of Lakeview and Sterling Lee, I guess they're doing some gambling.
If you were writing the check, who would you write the check to?
I think if you're going to do it the best way for the family, it's write it to the town of Lakeview.
As for the town of Lakeview, I would give $100 for it. Yeah, it's, yeah, I don't think we can do that. I don't think we can say we're proud of an individual, we can't afford to do something like that.
Give 50, Dr.? 50. P D Shine Club, you can give them $100.
I will, sir.
25. Around 50, person about 20. Global 6K for water, this is one of Jamal Robyn. What is your name? The Rural Vision Global 6K for water. We get paid to do it.
I'm gonna give 100 to that, brother.
So that's a GTA pageant workshop, that's something they see, and they're requesting them to use for other supplies. Is that Grover Gold or what is it? This is a pageant, this is one of Jamal Robyn also. It's a pageant workshop, and they're asking for different things. If you don't want to give money, you can give gowns and front dresses, pins, markers, folders, high heels, gel, fishies, big labels, to their necessities, a variety of things, makeup, dress bags, makeup carrier, makeup wax, jewelry carrier, and there's a sponsorship. 75 dollars is bronze sponsorship, silver is 150 dollars, gold is 300 dollars, black is 500 dollars. So this is just a workshop for the...
You have to, 150.
We have to do it, so, I'm ready.
I want to give 100 dollars to Lakeview High School for the event they're going to have. Motion approved, everybody, please. Got a motion in a second?
I think so.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any input? Spectrum Charter Communication, Matt Wills.
This corner, four, do I need to hear it? I don't, whatever reason it is. I tell you what, I can make this presentation available to you guys, I'll send it to you, and I'll just run through it relatively, relatively easy. My name's Matt Wills, and I'm State Government Affairs Director for Charter Communications Spectrum Cable Company here in South Carolina, doing the fiber build, broadband expansion into Dillon County. I'm happy to report as of, let's see, as of the end of last month, we are 99% complete with all projects in the county on our expansion effort. It doesn't include some of the additional addresses that have been provided, as well as some synergy stuff that we're working on to complete, some passings in places that we have not, like didn't meet, we were in areas the first time around. But with where we were versus where we are today, the Art Off expansion, or, sorry, the Art Off acceleration that happened towards the tail end of last year after October, we went through, we have built nearly 230 miles of fiber in the county, connecting over 2,100 locations or passings, is what we call in the industry, through the effort of accelerating what we missed last, last fall, I had to give back our contract that we won through the FCC bid. We finished those, and they are activated and ready for service. I guess with that, I know there's, I know there's questions, specific questions on addresses in certain places, and I would, I would ask that those either be sent to the administrator and sent to me directly, or you can send those to me directly to get questions and, or you can give the answers to your questions on them. But that's pretty much the update. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have now.
We continue to get questions, occasionally, everybody, we don't know each other.
Yes, sir.
Somebody will come up to us on the street and say, hey, I went by it in the street, but it didn't turn down my way.
Right.
Is that going to be addressed at another time?
So it's, it's being addressed. That's part of the, that last 1%, if you will. There were, there are, there are going to be places that we missed, based on what we didn't see or missed in the, excuse me, in the design process. So just a little, kind of one-on-one, if you will, on exactly what the process was. We built, we initially bid out on a census block information. So everything that was included in that census block that we bid on has to be included in our construction. So if we missed it the first time around, we had to come back and rebuild and build back to it. If we continue to miss those, we got, we've got, on the rule, on that particular bill, silo, if you will, that completion date, now, being as far along as we are, we're well ahead of that, that completion date is not until 2028 for that to be done. But like I said, we're way, way, way in advance of that number. And we're looking to, in the month of June, I think we had a discussion about having an event here in the county, bringing in our sales team, our sales folks, and helping folks get service to their address, should they want it.
So the grace period of somebody who was missed, 28, what's your contract stipulation?
Well, so the contract stipulates a certain date, we're going to get to them as soon as we know what they are. Yes, sir.
Because I have people say, you're going down there on one side of the road, and they're on the other side of the road, they're going to get it. I'm sure if you're running them, ain't he, and you can...
Absolutely, absolutely. As long as we know where those are, where those misses are, we can, we can correct that.
Another question's come up.
Ms. Rice, do you have any questions you want to ask, because I know you're in my district, and I think you only missed the gate, I found out.
Am I out of order to speak now, or...
Can she ask him a question? Yeah, yeah, you want to ask.
Well, I guess my question is, in our community of Bingham, y'all stopped less than a mile out of Bingham on both sides, and you left the whole community out. And I've got here 28 names of people that were waiting for Spectrum. My question is, first, who decides where you go?
So that's prescribed by the census block on, that we bid on with the FCC, the federal communications folks, and I don't know if that, if that particular area that you're darkening out, we can certainly talk about after we're...
It's right down 34.
So, but what I mean is, is, does it fall into that specific area? There are ways that I can obviously look it up and find out where you need to a specific answer. But there are ways that we can, we can rectify that, that miss.
She don't believe that you can get it in green.
But we can certainly take a look at it and find a solution for it.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
The minister sent you an email, and you sent back some ones that you get it on, her name is on there, it come back in green, does that mean she can get it?
Yes, yes.
That's the name on the Art Off area?
Yes, that's, so the ones that were specifically notified as Art Off, right, that's part of the rural, the rural development opportunity fund, the FCC.
And I appreciate that, but...
It doesn't help you, no way.
There are other people in the community, is what I'm saying. I appreciate the fact that, you know, my name's in green and I'm going to get it, but what about all the other people that want?
Sure. And again, I think there were some that were on the same street, and some of these, some of these get identified in places where it's in a cluster rather than a specific address, and we're, we, as a company, we've kind of changed the way that we look at this from a standpoint of looking at polygons on a map that where somebody has actually drawn a line, rather than now we're looking at the physical lat long information, those lat two longs, typical information on the map, to be able to update people in real time, what's actually happening, with their address, yes or no, in the immediacy. And I think with that specifically, we'll be able to get answers to all of these. I'll be more than happy to take that list with me and then obviously get back to either the town or the bureau directly to be able to say, hey, this is what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks for your time.
Yes, sir. I have another question. In rural areas, I know you have to treat a business as a business, residence as a residence, how do you treat a small church?
As a residence?
As a residence?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is there a different way to contact, because we were, churches are small.
Sure.
And I was, I was told it was 300 bucks a month, 4,000 dollars, making improvements from the last vote to the thing, and that was, after I woke up from fainting and everything...
Sure. Absolutely. Is this one where it was a certain distance from the last connection point, and then that's what the, when you called? Is it, is that, what I guess what I'm trying to ask is...
The surface on both sides is already gone by the road, it just didn't, it didn't turn in our drive.
The church that was, it's like, it's by itself, it's like, if you were to draw a kind of circle around, there's not really much else around it, correct?
Cemetery, but...
Okay.
It's in the community.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, before we, before I get out of here, I'll, I'll make sure I have that addressed, and we'll get it, we'll get it addressed as well. Look, our, our goal is to not...
I don't owe you, man.
Certainly. Our, our goal here is, is not to be just a company that comes into the community and provides, provide the service, our goal is to be a steward of the community as well, just as you are as elected official. We want to be a partner.
Very much appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate his question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Number 11, PD Coalition, Ms. Glenda.
Hi.
Quiet.
I'm just going to take a few minutes of your time, everyone. If you're not familiar with PD Coalition, PD Coalition is a nonprofit volunteer organization that is dedicated to the reduction of sexual assault, domestic violence, and child abuse. We're here in Dillon. What I'd like to do is provide to the pamphlets, that also has two letters in there that would lead them. And I'd like you to take these pamphlets, it has the resources in it that we provide, the new programs as well as the older programs. And if, I'm not saying that anyone here is in trouble, but if you know someone that is, please give them our information and that we can assist them. We appreciate the county for everything that you do. I have Steve Johnson here with me tonight, he's one of our board members. If you have any questions concerning funding, he's the person that can answer your question. So, thank you very much for everything, and nice to meet everybody. As you know, we're located at 1101 Highway 31 North. So I'm just, I was told three minutes. So did I do three minutes to go? So, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Steve, do you want to say something?
You got it covered.
Thank you very much.
They don't want to hear me ask for money, I guess.
Let's see, they're requesting money. Didn't we have some money in there?
And I told her before, we did budget last year, $1,000 for PD, and she's going to get her request in for this.
Okay.
And we appreciate everything. That was kind of my purpose to come, but since I've already got that in there, but we do appreciate everything I do for us, really do.
Thank you. All right, number 12, Brean the Door Mission, Latasha Sellers, she's not here, so we'll skip that one. Number 13, Fager Rice Water Drainage and Internet Access, and maybe the internet access is...
I think we've already covered the internet access part of it. And I appreciate, thank you, county council for allowing me to come and speak today. Our little community was a little upset that on both sides of us, less a mile on one side and a half mile on the other, Spectrum stopped. So hopefully that will be rectified, and we appreciate you so much for reaching out in our community. So I want to, I don't want to beat the internet, the Spectrum issue to death. So since we've already talked about that, I do want to talk about water drainage, and I'm sure that's an issue we have throughout the county. But we have a problem in the Bingham area, water standing in the yards, in the ditches, there's nowhere for the water to flow. Ditches are never cleaned out, and as you know, we're getting into summer, mosquitoes. Not only does it cause mosquito infestation, but also mold in the homes whenever water stands around the homes. So I know previous county council, you did go out there and did a little bit of drainage, but we do need attention to that. And if we look at the county, if we're going out of Dillon towards my area, the ditches are just in terrible shape. They don't have, some of them, you don't even know a ditch is there because it's never cleaned out. There's nowhere for it to go. So I will appreciate county council, y'all looking at that, into that throughout our county, just to make our county look better and more appealing. Thank you, Jeff, for your time.
Thank you.
Number 14, Richard Calhoun, litter problem. Can I say something before you start though?
Yes, sir.
Some of, not you, Ms. Rice, some of those ditches you're probably talking about are handled by the state. If it's a state road, the DOT handles some of those, but we can let them know. We can also...
And you also look at Bingham Road, I mean, because water stands there, the road is just deteriorating.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Harper can be with him to determine who has made his responsibility, or whether it's private.
Mr. McNeil's with us here today, so I'm sure he took it in.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, my name is Richard Calhoun, and I am a resident of Hamer. I'm here today to address the council concerning the deteriorating litter problem that we have in the county. I'm sure you're all aware of this. I've lived in Hamer most of my life, and currently it's the worst I've ever seen. And I think it's getting worse each year. And I think it's getting worse each year because there is a lack of deterrence in stopping the litter. I know each of you are aware of this problem, and I do appreciate and thank you for your recent emphasis on picking up the litter. And I know just recently that y'all have taken steps necessary to work on that problem. And it has been noticed dramatically. The cleanup has been remarkable in just a few short weeks, you've done a lot, and I do appreciate that. The reason I wanted to speak to y'all today is, is that I know we have a new county administrator, we also have several new council people. And I think that you, as a council and an administrator, have an opportunity to make a difference in our county where it will really matter. And I know that some of you individually, I know that Mr. Cook took on personally an area that was in terrible situation, and cleaned it up with his own resources. And Mr. Coward has posted many items on Facebook concerning that issue. But you, as a new county council and a new administrator, have an opportunity, I think, to do something that would really assist in helping this problem. I have a handout here that I would like to just let y'all take a look at, and it's. You're gonna try and pass it to them, Mr. Coward? This is an article that was in the Dillon Herald over two years ago, concerning the enforcement issue within the county. They were gonna put up cameras, they were gonna start writing tickets. I don't think, unfortunately, I don't think any of that ever happened, from what I've been researching, that I have talked about.
The cameras were put up, but no tickets were read.
That's right. I think that's probably the case. As I said, just take a look at that research there. The research that I did shows that enforcement efforts do work, while picking up the litter only contributes to additional litter. I think from a common sense standpoint, that's what most people know, is that if you don't stop a bad behavior, you get more of it. And there are resources available. Our legislature has passed recent laws allowing significant fines to be levied, as well as community service requiring that the offenders pick up litter for up to 40 hours a week. So, I think that that could tremendously, if attached to a communication system, press releases and so forth, acknowledging to the public what's occurring, that would significantly reduce the behavior that's causing the problem. So, I think this new council, this new administrator, today, would commit the resources and put a code enforcement officer in place. I know Mr. German very well, I think he could assess enough fines in a short period of time to pay, to reimburse the county for those resources, instead of having our taxpayer dollars go in to pay people to pick it up. So, I appreciate the time, and hopefully we can make some additional steps to improve the litter problem in our county.
Well, I had one road in my district, I live over a lot of them, and Mr. German picked up 2,000 pounds of trash on their road, and a week later, mattresses and everything else slung back out there again.
And Mr. Grice, I pick up on average.
We got enforced, somebody's got to be fined.
That's right. I, I pick up on average probably three 55 gallon trash bags a month on just a little short area on a red road in Hamer, which is a night, a sort of an isolated road. On Highway 301, from North Carolina line to the Dillon city limits, across our beautiful scenic river, it looks terrible 95% of the time. Now, if they just cleaned it up over the last few weeks, it looks great.
I, I will make comment, our, our administrator, he is, he's in the process of getting somebody certified by our team, and he's gonna, he's gonna work on getting that done. But also, I want to urge our citizens, we're throwing trash out, because it is our citizens and our taxpayers, I guess, that keep throwing it. I mean, I know other people come through our county, but it's all, it's, it's the citizens that's throwing the trash out. And they need to respect their area and other people's area more than they do, and just quit expecting somebody else to take care of the problem. Hopefully writing some tickets will help take care of that problem.
Yes, sir, I think.
But you know, if it's the same roads and the same communities and the same areas, then we kind of know it's, it's the people there. I mean, if people riding them same roads every day, that's throwing out the trash, just like you said, it was an isolated road, it's gotta be the same roads. I mean, busy roads, I understand, but, yes, sir?
Um, since we started a couple of years ago, stuff, we're probably close to 500,000 pounds of litter that has been, that has been picked up.
But you know, I urge our citizens, hey, find a trash can, we're throwing it out.
Exactly.
You know, keep it in your car till you get home.
And report it.
Well, Mr. Grice, and all due respect, I go to one of your county dumps, and I know, I talked to the employees, and there's cameras that have been there, probably once a month or more, the trash is dumped out at the gate.
Yes, sir, we know that.
At the gate, and there's surveillance there that are seeing the people do it. So, there's no communication in the, when you read the bookings in the Dillon County Herald, or in the Dillon Herald, very seldom do you see a litter charge. I don't think there are any litter charges.
I will say this, our new administrator plans on working on.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Harper. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to come and speak to the county, because I know there has been a change.
Help's on the way.
And one of the, help is on the way. But I, I do, I do think that that would send a message and would help, it's not gonna completely stop it.
No, it certainly helps. Yes, sir.
We're working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 15, approval by council, use of courthouse grunts, D. Dawkins, they say.
I'm not the motion to approve, but you, Chair.
What exactly is it?
It's a women empowerment grant.
I also would like to just, they, they, they usually do it every year just to put on record of, made a fourth of National Day of Prayer, been using that up there also.
Well, I was told, and I might be wrong, but then the clerk of court can tell the court I was praying, they always approve stuff when I always had.
Our, our policy is it goes to the clerk of court, and then it has to come to county council for final approval.
Okay.
You have to prove.
Yeah. There's a form, Mr. Pinkler, there's a form that they have to fill out and carry to the clerk of court for their signature, and then we bring it to county council for approval.
You got a, I got a motion, will be second. Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any input? Number 16, committee appoints. District one. District two, any? I think I have you on two. District three, any? District four, any? Councilman Cook said he wanted to appoint Vernon Grimbley on the grievance committee.
Mr. Chair, I know we got some vacancy, and if you would get with Mr. Sella on the planning board, and also on the planning and zoning appeals board, that we need to get some members on.
District six, you got any?
Mr. Grice is the chair.
And I don't have any input either, so, all we have on there is Vernon Grimbley for grievance committee, requires a motion.
We need a motion.
Second. Any more discussion, all in favor? Any input? Seventeen, PD Workforce Development Board reappointed Mr. James Roberts. Make a motion for that. Fire the motion.
I make a motion to appoint James Roberts.
Motion is second. Second. Motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor? Any input? Eighteen, administrator report.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of items. First one is tire recycling contract approval. We have to approve a contract for pickup and disposal of our, of the tires that come into the landfill. Mr. Grimbley has put together and requested bids, and he's got three proposals. One is from Central Carolina Tire Disposal for 185 dollars a ton, with trip fee and environmental fee. And then proposal number two is from Qium Direct for 350 dollars per turn, per ton. And proposal three is from Allen Scrap Metal with 375 a ton. I'd ask council's approval to contract with Central Carolina Tire to pick up the used tires that lay field.
Requires a motion.
I make a motion.
Motion is second. Second. Any more discussion, all in favor? Any input?
Okay, Mr. Chair, item number two is the Dorgan Street Park proposal. I'd like to ask council's approval to table that matter tonight. We got our bids in for list products that we've met with. We have 300,000 dollars that come from Senator Williams in legislature a year or two ago, and that was bids that come in at 420,000, 444 dollars. So, I'd like to ask council's permission to table this and let us get the committee back together.
Requires a motion.
We need a motion.
Second. Second. Motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Third item there, Mr. Chair, is a maintenance building and fence proposal. Mr. Carter's here tonight with us. As y'all know, back during the storm, the building was flooded, and it's got a lot of issues down there. Needs to be demolition taking, to take care of that, but we, we've got two bids in for, to build a new metal building over behind the old health department building. Those two bids, one of them come in at 199,857 dollars and 89 cents. The second one with, with the fencing and all comes in at 85,500, and that's through K and G Storage. Mr. Carter and I have met and looked over this, and we'd like to recommend council's approval to go with K and G Storage, to build this building and fencing. This was money that we got back during, with insurance money, so I'd like to ask council's approval.
I make the motion. Motion is second.
Second.
Second, any more discussion?
May I ask a question? Those buildings, those bids are way far apart, and we were preparing applesauce.
Mr. Carter did, yeah.
Okay. Set it up.
Yeah. And that's a 30 by 70 building. Um, the last thing I'd like to ask council to have a, have a vote.
Yes, good. It's got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Any input?
Mr. Chair, a week or so ago, Ms. Dawkins brought to my attention on a Monday about a proposed project that was going, going to be built in North Carolina, over above the Oakland area on the state line, that was going to involve some detonation of bombs and explosives and those kind of things. She called me on Monday, she found out on Sunday, I didn't even know about it, and we found out on Monday. And they were having a public hearing that night, and Ms. Dawkins went to the public hearing. I made some contacts with some friends of mine that are farmers and also involved and live in the community, and they went to the hearing that night. That project was tabled. There were several other people from the Roland area that was there to discuss that issue with Robson County's Board of Commissioners. It was tabled, but it's gonna be brought back up, I think, next week. There's a lot of issues that concerns there with that project, and my friends that were there said Ms. Dawkins did a good job of her presentation for her constituents in the, in her area. But we have with us tonight, Mr. Curry's here, and also Mr. Mike, or Mr. Reeves from Roland, that know a little bit more about that. So, I'd like to ask council's approval to let Mr. Curry and Mr. Reeves or Ms. Dawkins discuss that project and just let you know what's going on.
Just out here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name's Michael Reeves, I appreciate y'all letting me come up here and speak tonight. This is something, as, as he just mentioned, we've been fighting for the past week or so. A company out of Florida has bought about 600 acres that, or actually all in North Carolina, but we use it easement through South Carolina to access, to create a bomb testing facility. They have told us it will be anywhere from 500 to 1,000 pound warheads, and the, the effects will be felt for models, all the way into the Roland communities of Robson County, the Dillon community, or Dillon County. We have issues with environmental concerns, there's two active creeks that run through this property that directly feed the Little PD. And not on top of that, just the landowners, my family, multiple families have already signed petitions against it in South Carolina, and we wanted to bring it to the council's attention that this is going on. We were very thankful for Ms. Dawkins going and speaking last week and everything she has done, and as we continue to fight it. But I don't know if y'all have any specific questions, I don't want to go all night, but I just wanted to bring this to the council's attention.
They're looking to detonate the bombs?
Yes, sir. It's a, it's a company, ironically enough, their, the name of the company is a lot of bad news, LLC out of Florida. But when the property was bought, the landowner, I guess there, the prospective landowner came up to us and a couple of the landowners, because the 651 acres is actually completely landlocked. They would have already had the permit if it wasn't for them being landlocked, they don't have an address. So, but when they come up to us, it was kind of spoken that it was gonna be a wounded warriors training facility. So, all of us were on board with it, and then now it has been a complete 360 to the S.
So, they're having an easement through South Carolina?
Yes, sir.
Whose land, or?
It is on our land, Mike Reeves' land.
So, they can make you give them an easement to get on?
We're currently fighting it, it's an easement that has been there since the 50s from previous landowners for logging, so there, we are attacking it from different, I guess, aspects to see if we can get that cleared in South Carolina court or get removed. But that right now is the problem. I know in North Carolina, they mentioned that it could become issue, and we're talking about bombs and hazmat, if something ever happened, they would have to get Dillon County's approval for just EMS and fire to even cross it, cross the county line to get in there.
What can we do to help them stop this? I don't look back around my eyes.
I'm not sure.
Four, five miles, I mean, it's gonna affect people's houses.
Exactly, that's where we're worried about. I mean, environmental first, but property values are gonna just fall.
That's true.
And they, they said, I mean, we're, the shapers have, they're actually working on getting an environmental study done, because that's the biggest aspect. I mean, you just say if something happened, an accident, even an accident, and it got into the Little PD or something, and it would ruin probably one of the landmarks of Dillon County.
That's a safe and real pursuit.
Exactly, 100%.
Mr. Grice, the council could certainly direct administrators to notify DHEC and their water permitting crowd and their environmental crowd of what's going on, send the information to DHEC so that DHEC can open up a case on it if they haven't already.
Could we upside pass a resolution in opposition?
Certainly could do that as well.
Doesn't care anymore waiting in the paper zone, but it doesn't have some other county's not in favor.
So, they're having a meeting again next week?
Yes, sir.
And where is that at?
In Lumberton, at the, I guess, I think it's the Robson County Administration building.
What day is that?
Don't have that in front of me, my dad has, but I can get that too.
Somebody told me, I don't know if it's someone else, that they said that if you were from South Carolina, they wouldn't allow you to speak at this meeting, you had to live in North Carolina, is that correct?
I believe so.
So, we can do a resolution?
A resolution in opposition of, and get the attorneys to write up that resolution for us and submit it to Robson County Board of Commissioners. I had a conversation with Randy Carlisle, you know Randy? Randy, I think you talked to the commissioner from that district, Ms. Campbell, and they really felt like they had the votes to turn it down. But then I talked with Dixon Ivy Junior, who's the planning director for Robson County this week, and Dixon sort of informed me that the group is coming back with some changes and trying to get council and commissioners over there to approve.
Well, and if I may just to add to that, Dad's lawyer, the lawyer that they, they've got a, an environmental lawyer from Robson County that's already, I guess, taking it, but the, so basically, even if but the, so basically, even if Robson County revokes the permits, they can, I guess, escalate it to a judge, and the judge can hear it, but the problem is right now, I guess, it's in the, the planning stages, so we can actually come out and speak. Once it gets in front of the judge, there is no speak, it is purely what's on paper. So, that, so anything we add, I mean, just, it definitely helps.
I'll report.
I think everybody's probably in favor of that. Can we do some, do whatever we can?
Y'all would have to make a motion to, and then I'll go ahead and report it to DEHEC.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion on doing a resolution or whatever to help? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Guys, I do appreciate y'all letting me come up here and speak.
Mr. Pinkley? And if you are from South Carolina, you can speak also, because Ms. Dawkins was able to speak at the last meeting.
Can the attorney represent us and speak for us over there at the next meeting?
We can, sorry, we sent the county attorney.
Yeah.
Thank you. That might be a little bit more.
It's the meeting next week.
Yeah.
You don't have to be here at that time. Yes, we're not, all in favor?
Okay. John was just telling me, John DeBeau's Kenzen out of country, but John's got a degree in environmental management, so it might be good to have him down. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We're not taking executive session, economic development requires a motion to go to executive session.
We're taking a motion to go on the executive session.
Motion is second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
This one's got a little baby at home, so I know his wife.
You're now at executive session where no action was taken, we're now at number 20 adjourned, requires a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion is second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?